Welcome, everybody. It's seven fifty-nine. So I think maybe we should wait another thirty seconds before we actually start this officially. But that's just giving me time to, once again, remind everyone that if you're at this meeting, at this hearing, you do need to sign in to the chat with your name and your address and your affiliation, if any. So, this is, this is, this meeting, this hearing is all on Zoom. And so when you, if you do have a question or a comment, the first, first up, all questions and comments are going to be from the, from the, from the two boards. And then from town officials who are here, if they would do pose any questions or make a comment. And then we, if there's a butters that are other, other boards and departments in town, and then a butters, and then members of the public. I think I got that right. If I don't get anything right, I'm, I'm counting on one other, other board members to tell me that. You can send me a private message and say, you did this incorrectly, but, or you can just say it out loud. I don't care. So we're gonna go ahead and open this joint public hearing. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. So I'm, I know that we have Tom Johnson with us tonight. Who's a project engineer for this, although I probably got your title wrong, Tom. Hope I didn't. And I don't know if, I'm not seeing that Mr. Parisi is here yet.
Yeah, Noah, hi, good evening. It's Tom Johnson.
Okay.
Fran has to be, had to be in two places at once. He may join in a little bit, but I'm, I'm ready to.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Thanks for making that clear. So I'm gonna actually open this and ask if members of the zoning board want to speak directly to this, to these requests for variance, and if they have any particular questions or comments or anything they wanna mull over right now.
Anybody in zoning board have a, a comment or question? I guess I, one thing I would like to say is that some of the, the letters that have come in with comments have talked about whether people on the two boards have already made up their minds prior to any discussion. I just wanna assure anybody that's watching that. I know for myself, and I think I could speak for each of us, that we have not come to our hearings with our mind made up. We're keeping an open mind through all this. And that we, we have a responsibility to the town of Conway to represent the town's best interests, not our own personal feelings. I just wanna assure people of that, because that was sort of a tenor of the letters that did come in. So I did wanna say that.
Mark, I think it would be that, I think it would be valuable if you remind everybody what the scope of the zoning variance decision is based. You read that out at the last meeting, and I think it would be helpful if you reminded everybody what that was again.
In terms of the responsibilities of how a variance is decided upon, you mean?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So the way a variance is decided, and this is with Massachusetts general laws, is it's, they called it seven criteria for variance. The first one is that the land or structure named in the variance petition, petition is uniquely and specifically impacted by soil conditions, shape of the land parcel and the topography. The second is that circumstances did not generally affect land or other structures in the zoning district. The third one is that due to circumstances related to the soil shape or topography, you can see there's a, a general thread in this. The petitioner would suffer hardship if the zoning were to be enforced. In other words, to not grant a variance. The fourth is that the hardship may be financial or another hardship, but may not be personal for the petitioner, but affect other properties in the district and must relate to the soil shape or topography of the land. The fifth is that granting of the variance will not cause detriment to the public good, or may even enhance it in some way. The example they use, even though it's not relevant in this, is adding a street light which would enhance road safety. The sixth one is granting the variance would not nullify or degrade substantially the meaning or the intent of the zoning bylaws, which are, as we know, are set by the town, the town meeting. And the seventh is the owner cannot make reasonable use of the property under the existing zoning. And so those seven criteria, what we have to examine in making a decision whether to grant a variance, in this case, for the height of the tower.
Exactly. Thank you. That's was my next request.
So the, the bylaw says that the, that the tower cannot be taller than a hundred twenty feet. And the, the application is for the tower to be a hundred fifty-six feet.
And again, that's the scope of the ZDA decision, right? That is nothing else?
Yeah, well, well, I suppose the other way of explaining that, in the bylaw itself, which, let's see. Where the, says the Connie, the Conway Planning Board, which also, in this case, would involve the zoning board for the variance, that it would issue a special permit, in this case, the, the zoning board of appeals to a duly licensed wireless carrier. And as we've learned that the application is for, by the, the contractor for building the tower, not the actual carrier. So the thing we'd be faced with is needing to designate, if we were to choose to do this, to designate Vertex as a representative of wireless carriers that would be contracted later on. And so I, I don't know if that's something that should be decide, or moved and then voted on now, or wait till just prior to a vote about the variance itself.
Yeah.
Andy, I don't know if you have a, is Andy on yet?
Yeah, he's here. Or he was here.
Yeah, I'm here. No, I don't have, I don't think we have to do that right away. I think we can wait.
Wait till like before the, the vote itself, if we're to take that?
Uh, yeah, I think that's, that's correct.
Okay, then, then I would defer, you know, doing that till when we get to the position of voting, if we get to that point.
I actually have a question related to the height piece, and I don't know if this is the right place to ask it or, or not. I think since, since this is the zoning board stepping in here, is this something I could, I just am curious about?
Could you, I think you need to identify yourself and state where you live.
Oh, well, I'm Beth Firstman, the chair of the planning board, and I live on Mystic Grove.
The other way of looking at it is, who are you addressing the question to?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's a good question. I'm, I would think I'd be addressing the question to either Tom Johnson or Fran Parisi, actually.
Which by default makes, means that Tom.
Yeah.
Oh, no, actually, Fran just jumped down here too.
I'm here now.
Yeah, hi. So I, I guess my question is concerning the height of this particular tower. And if you could address specifically, when I look at the most recent Ashfield decision to permit a, a tower built by Vertex in Ashfield, that decision also had a variance going along with it. And there, I have to refer back to their bylaws. So their bylaws for the town of Ashfield are, their maximum height is eighty feet in their bylaw. And they, they, the applicant, in this case, Vertex Tower Assets, asked to vary it to a hundred and ten feet, a hundred and sixteen feet, its highest appurtenance. And the application in Conway is for a, is for a much higher tower. And so I'm just wondering, I know that these are different places, they're different towns, but they're not how different of towns they are. So if somebody could address that specifically, why the different, why the significant difference in height?
There's, that's a very long answer to a reasonable and short question. It's very location specific. The site in Ashfield, we were kinda at the top of the ridge so that we were able to get coverage along the one sixteen corridor, and also the one twelve corridor going up towards Buckland with a tower a hundred and ten feet tall. And, and again, when, when we say we're building a tower a hundred and ten feet tall, we look at the low man on the totem pole. Because they have to get as equally adequate coverage as the high man. So, so something like eighty feet was adequate there to cover the, the, the coverage gap. Here, you know, because of the topography in the hill, that is really to the wet, there's a pretty good sized hill between this site and downtown Conway where the water tank is. And then, given the way the road curves around the hill that we're on, you know, we needed more height. The other thing that factors into that, quite frankly, is visibility. You know, the, the Ashfield Tower was far more visible because of the pond and the access to the pond, and given the way the route, not so much one twelve, but one sixteen, there were some pretty substantial vistas, so we took that into account. And here, you know, as we, as we knew was gonna be the case, but as was clearly shown by the visibility demonstration, the visibility here is not as dramatic, where, you know, the way the setback is, the way the slope is, the way the trees are, you know, we, tho- those are both great visual buffers, but actual impediments to getting the signal down into the valley. So it, you know, we, we do extensive research. I think your consultant concurred with this to say that it really was the, the minimum height necessary to achieve the coverage objective. The other issue is the water tank in downtown is not that tall. And it's an existing structure, and carriers have used it and will be encouraged to use it. But when you're starting with something taller, and shorter on one end, you need a, a taller tower at the next site to kinda connect up with the two, and to connect up with the three.
Fran, if I might just add a couple, couple thoughts there. For folks that are familiar with Ashfield, the tower site there that was approved is on top of Ridge Hill, which is, there's the Ashfield Lake, and then if you're driving one down one twelve, and if you were to take a right into the center of town, if you look straight out your windshield, there's a, a transmission lines that come down across the hill. The tower is actually sitting up on the top of that peak, but it's on the peak of that ridge. So based on the topography, everything around it drops off. And so really, to, to get past those impediments that Fran's talking about, the lowest carrier needs to just get above the top of the trees there. So the, the topography i- in this site in Conway is, is different. So it's, it's all goes into the sauce with the, with the, with the radio frequency analysis, and, and the heights are a result of that.
Thank you. So are there any related questions from the zoning board for any of the variance requests?
If, if I could respond to something that Mr. Silverman said a few minutes ago, right I was getting on, the, the variance request of the zoning board is for the height. With respect to the fact that we're not a carrier, I believe the last time we tried this, the town reached out to council that advised that the zoning board didn't have to grant a variance from that. If the planning board granted a, approved it with a condition that we don't build it. So I don't believe we've, I, I, we might have asked for a variance, but I think the appropriate, the appropriate response is if the boards, each of the boards were so inclined, would be for the planning board to approve the site with a condition similar to the other one, that we don't build it without a licensed carrier, a committed license.
Right. I, that's, I'm glad you brought that up. That is the condition of the last special permit that was issued for another cell tower in Conway. And that condition was that it not, construction could not start until there was at least one, there was one licensed carrier who had contracted with Vertex to put their equipment on the tower. So that, that was how that was addressed last time.
So in its, in a sense, it's not that, I mean, granting a conditional variance, or a special permit for that matter, is something that the town council felt we could do it that way.
Yes.
So that way, it complies as written by, with the bylaw, without having to designate a representative on the night that we vote on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, to, you can grant condition, you can put conditions in your variance decision. I, I don't know that the zoning board did because the planning board did. And you can make your zoning board approval subject to planning board approval, because I'm not sure who's going first here. But, and I think the last time, the zoning board did go first, and, and can make a condition that it's subject to planning board approval, and then the planning board can make that condition.
Yeah. Can discuss it. We did bring up the last time the question of whether we could condition it for two carriers, licensed carriers. And I don't remember the answer. I just remember that the answer was no.
Uh, uh, there's actually a very specific rea-, there's actually a very specific reason for that. One of the other prohibitions in the telecommunications act is that you not discriminate amongst carriers. So if the first carrier showed up today and said, we're ready, and you said, no, you gotta wait for carrier number two, that's considered discriminatory. So and, you know, from the town's perspective, I agree with the thought that one should be committed, but it, it's, it, it, from our perspective, it's di- it's difficult to get multiple people committed at the same time. And oftentimes, we get the first one to commit based on the promise that we're gonna build it, and then we build it, and then people see it and attach onto it, which is exactly what happened in Cholrain. So so it's really hard to get two people to commit period, let alone two people to commit before they can actually touch it.
So Beth, what, if, if the zoning board were to approve it, the question is, would we do it contingent upon the planning board making that, that condition? Or just wait till after the planning board makes a decision? And if, if the, if it's approved with that condition, then the zoning board would join in? Is that the interpretation from town council then?
I have to be honest, I don't remember the exact interpretation from town council.
I remember.
Go back and take a look at it. Yeah.
And I do remember grappling with this two years ago, so I, you know. And I, I remember the designation we made that night. But it was, it was not something working, as I remember, with the, with the conditions put by the.
Right. That was a condition we put on it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we could. Yeah, we could. Um, so there's four members of the zoning board here. If they have any other questions, I think now's the time to bring our, any other points they wanna clarify.
Anybody from the zoning board have a?
Peter or Jessup, don't forget to unmute yourself, Peter.
Two things, I guess. It's, it's just from a common sense point of view. I don't know if this, but it seems to make sense to have the planning board approve the tower, and then the ZB, the zoning board approve the variance. I mean, it seems like, it doesn't seem to make sense to approve a variance if there's nothing to have, if, if the structure hasn't been approved by the planning board. And then.
I agree with that.
And then, when you were, I was looking in our, in our regs for these, the seven, the seven issues upon which we can make our decision. And when you were reading one down, was there one or two that mentioned health in there, Mark? I'm sorry. No.
No, uh, well, um, not specifically, no.
Okay. I thought I heard that.
Are you, you wondering about that? Because a great deal of the discussion last Tuesday had to do with health.
Right, right.
I would like to make a comment about that at some point, whether it's right now. Anybody else in the zoning board have a question or a comment?
Not me, I'm all set.
Okay, I'd like sort of to address that a little bit, because I, I spent a, a good deal of, in fact, the last two years checking out some points that, that Fran had made two years ago about the, the requirements, if that's a fair word, of the, of the FCC, to fill in gaps in cellphone coverage. And it really limited the latitude that local boards had in towns. And what I did this winter and spring is I, I, I found some documentation and actually spoke to, to, to attorneys of the FCC who got me some other documentation. And one thing that I learned over this was that, because we had a lot of very angry, fearful, adamant points that were made last Tuesday about the health consequences, and how the FCC comes about making the standards they have in terms of radio frequency transmission and the, the dan- health dangers of that. And one thing that I found, and this found in many sources, what the FCC has followed the standard set by ANSI. And with ANSI, the American National Standards Institute is completely independent from the, the government. And so the standards they set in many different areas, one of them has to do with radio frequency transmissions. And it's something that has been deemed dependable, even though there certainly was a lot of disagreement with that stated last week. But it's also been shown that the courts, in any court challenges, will not honor protests and suits that don't, aren't consistent with the, the standards that ANSI has set. And so in that way, we are limited in terms of not having unassailable reasons for denying a special permit or variance based on health standards. If, if we're, if we insist on something more stringent than what ANSI has said. So I just wanna, you know, say that we're doing this carefully, but it's also something that the courts have really, you know, said in, in responding to different challenges being made on that. And, and we, in, in fact, local boards have lost in court cases when they have not been consistent with, with following those recommendations. So I, I just, I wanna, you know, get that out there. Was that something that was very clear in all the research and all the, the people I had spoken to? So I, I know if that addresses, you know, questions like you're asking, Peter, about, about health standards and how to deal with that. But, but it's something that was very clear, I think. And if we're just set arbitrarily or nefariously by the FCC, that'd be one thing, but that's not the case.
Thank you, Mark. I'm, I'm wondering if people from the planning board have any specific questions or comments that they wanna make at this time? You can direct it to the general room here, or specifically to Mr. Parisi or Tom Johnson. So that would be, if you can, yes, Susan, thank you.
I, I just am curious. So at this point, you have a permit for another tower in Conway. And that has not started construction because you have not yet been able to identify a carrier. Is that why that has not started construction?
There's a lot of reasons, but that's one of them, yes. The, the.
And the other reasons.
Basically COVID, COVID related and supply chain related and the world related. We have struggled in a lot of towns similarly because of this.
I have a question in that case. Why, why propose a new tower? You're not able to build the first one. Other than the obvious reasons of, you know, giving everything else set up in order to, to go about filling in those gaps.
The need doesn't change, just the development timing. The, the gap doesn't go away. And we're quite confident as an applicant that this is going to happen. We've invested a lot of time and money. And to be quite frank, we don't have complete control over the development schedule. Conway has been very expeditious and easy to get through the permitting process. Other towns aren't so easy. And so and, and, you know, we just, you know, we, we have to move forward notwithstanding the pandemic. And, you know, that's really what has slowed things down. It doesn't change our desire or our motivation to go forward, and we call it Conway one, or with Conway two, or with Ashfield, because we're quite confident that all of them are gonna get built eventually.
Thank you. Susan, was that the last part of your question as well?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else from the planning board have specific questions or non-specific questions even that relate to this part of it? I don't, if you, if you're raising your hand, Joe's raising his hand. No.
I, I guess I'm gonna introduce the elephant in the room. I listened to the seminar of people from New Hampshire. And a couple of the things that are challenging for me are insulating houses so that the radiation cannot get inside the houses. Shielding, I guess it's technically called. And then the other is distance from, from dwellings or residences to cell towers. And I wonder if Fran or, or Tom could address those two issues. I suspect the undertow is health, but they're not directly related to health.
I would say it's clearly related to health. And I'm not ducking it, because I hate the lawyer responses, notwithstanding what Mr. Silverman just said. That's the standard lawyer response.
A lawyer.
There, there's been an immense amount of research. There are people who have different opinions, even with science. But the, the authorities, the, the governing authorities, the the FCC and all its consulting agencies have, have deemed this safe. The state of New Hampshire commissioned a study that wasn't even universally adopted. There was dissents within that study. There were questions raised, but they didn't have the authority to make law. They simply passed on their recommendations to the state legislature and the FCC. And nothing has happened, notwithstanding that. I will tell you, I've not heard of shielding or coating houses or whatever was raised before today, to be quite frankly. I, no one's ever raised it before in my world. It, you know, we've, we've built many, many facilities much closer and on top of residential structures. I've built facilities much closer to schools and other churches and other places of assembly. We've built them on hospitals. You know, you know, we've been living with this technology for a very long time, and there's an immense amount of research that supports the safety of it. And the, so you know, the, the recommendations from that report were just, you know, a few people's opinion and, and not based on, on true science or anything like that.
That is pathetic.
Thank you, Fran.
Are you muted? Beth, are you muted?
Beth, your voice.
Beth, you're muted.
Sorry. So maybe I muted myself too soon. I'm asking people to sign in on the chat with your name, your address, your affiliation. Benny, if you're not. Benny, if you're not speaking, if you haven't been called on, please mute yourself. And then remember to unmute yourself when you're getting ready to speak. I do want to specifically mention something about, we have received a number of public comments from email. Those will be part of the public record. For people who are joining us late, this meeting is being recorded over Zoom and will be posted on our website as well as the minutes will be available. Anything that was received over email will be included in the public record. I probably just said that. So if you submitted a public comment over email, you don't need to repeat it tonight. It will be part of the public record. So I want to just mention something in terms of the way that the planning board approves special permit applications. The thing that we are legally required to do is to pay attention to our specific bylaw. And we go like piece by piece through the bylaw, comparing the application to how it matches up with the bylaws. Our bylaws have been, as I attempted to talk about last time, but also Mark brought up this time. Any health concerns are not addressed in Article Eight wireless communication facilities. And that is a long explanation. And I know that many, many people there are aware of why that is. And for me, the short sentence of why that is, is because we are actually not, we are prohibited from engaging with that sort of sort of thing. And I also want to point out another thing which we often forget about. Downtown Conway has had a cell tower facility right in the center of town for how many years? Does anyone know how many years it's been there on Orchard Equipment? Has it been more than a decade? I think it's been more than a decade. Do you know, Joe? When that, when that, so.
I don't remember specifically, but yes, longer than a decade.
Yeah, so I'm just bringing that up. We have a cell tower. It's in, it's in a residential neighborhood. It's been there for quite some time. Just as a fact. So are there other members of the planning board who might have direct questions or comments that they want to make? Susan?
So, yeah, Susan Fenton, member of the planning board. So in this New Hampshire document that was circulated to us for our, for us to read and consider, that there was a comment that said that the setback for all new cell towers should be 500 meters, which translates to 1,600 feet from any residential building. And from my view of the site, I believe that this cell tower is farther away than 1,600 feet from any residence. But I just wondered if you had a comment on that.
I, we haven't looked at it. It's not law. It's, it's, like I said, one man's recommendation.
No, I know. I was just curious.
I, I'll be honest, I haven't looked at it. I'm going to ask Tom to look at the site plans. And I would say he will answer the question, although not off the top of his head. And I'd say you're pretty close. I just don't know exactly, but I'd say, you know, we're substantially set farther back than the water tank in the center of town or the cell tower on Berkshire East or the cell tower in Deerfield. So I, I think we've done a pretty good job of citing it as.
Yeah, I was, I was just, I was just curious. Thank you.
It's also unclear to me with this 500 meters, which I, I think, whatever, wherever this came from, let's just stick with it for right now. Because my curiosity is basically, are people measuring this from the base of the tower? Or the top of the tower, which would mean that it would be, like, I don't understand where the measurement comes from. And I, and I'm just bringing it up because it seems like it's an example to me of something that gets into the public discourse and then accepted as some sort of standard. And I'm not sure, you know, what, what the basis for it might be. But perhaps one of the things that would help the discussion is if we knew how how far the residences were from the what base of the tower? Top of the tower?
That would seem to be the, that would seem to be the recommendation in this particular document was that the setback for all new cell towers shall be 500 meters. And that I, I would interpret that to mean the setback from the construction site. But that's just my interpretation.
So because of my fabulous, strange setup here, I can't really see everybody at once. So if you do want to speak and you're from the planning board, either raise your hand or put it in the chat and I'll notice it and call on you. Or just interrupt me, playboard. I see that some people have raised their hands and the order of this public hearing is the same as it has been, which is the planning board and the zoning board asked questions first, then people from the, people from the town. So any town departments that are here that have questions and then a butters. And in this case, if the landowner wanted to speak as an abutter, that would be fine with me. And then we'll open it to other, other public comments. So is there anybody from the planning board that has anything to say? And if not, at this time, not to say you can't speak later, you can. If not, then anyone from our town, I know that someone from the conservation commission is here. And I'm wondering if they have any specific questions or comments to make.
I do not have any specific questions or comments. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Bruton. And anyone else from our town? No. Okay. So what about any abutters? Direct abutters to this proposed? Please. Bobby, no, nothing to say. Anyone else? Okay. So I can open this up to questions from people who are, who are residents of Conway. And again, I would say if you wrote us, thank you for your comments. We have them. They will be part of the public record. I would prefer you not to repeat them at this hearing. We've, we've read them. We will include them in the public record and we'll take them into account. So if you have, if you didn't write to us and you have something to say, or if you have something entirely different than what you said in your, in your comments, then I'll call on you. So who is here? I think we've got Devlin put into the chat that she wants to be recognized. So I'm going to recognize Devlin. Someone.
Thank you, Beth. I just wanted to go over the meeting last week. I reviewed it, the video. And because I was scrambling with my notes, I recorded some segments of the video that I thought we should all listen to again from what Fran was saying. And also Fred Goldstein was saying regarding the signals and holding the phone up to your ear. Because I had mentioned my aunt had a brain tumor removed and I was a bit concerned about health and I'm hoping that's okay that I'm bringing this up. But I just want to like, let everybody listen to what Fran and Fred said.
No, no, wait, no, wait, 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 wait. I don't, I don't think this is an appropriate thing to be doing. I'm not sure. Can, can you just summarize what it is that you're concerned about?
Okay, basically, and I guess it's on, it's been recorded, so it's been documented. But the radius, the circle was going to be around 90 homes. We're going to have solid coverage of, for cellphone service. And then 137 homes, it's like a lower probability for having a weak signal. And when I was concerned about, you know, getting the radiation, Fred Goldstein was talking about, well, if you only have one bar of service, your phone's going to be working a lot harder. And, and you, I wouldn't want to be on my phone all day with one bar of service because it's going to be putting out more of that signal. And when you're closer to a cellphone tower, it's a lot less of a, an intense signal because it's right there. It doesn't have to work very hard. So I've basically gotten out of that statement, 137 homes are going to have like one bar of service. And for people that don't have Bluetooth, what that Fred mentioned, oh, everybody should get Bluetooth. Not everybody's going to be able to talk on Bluetooth with their cell phones. And a lot of people hold their phones up to their ear. So they are getting that higher level of intense cellphone radiation, whatever you want to call it. And the other, the last little segment that I recorded was one minute, or I'm sorry, one hour and 59 minutes. You can write down that time into the meeting last week where Fran was kind of going off. No offense, Fran, but you were kind of babbling on about how everything is unknown. There are so many unknowns. And why we're afraid is because there are so many unknowns. And I think that's pretty valid when you can actually say, yeah, we're concerned because there are so many unknowns. That's valid. We don't know what we're getting into. And with the radiation, with everything else, I think we need to be pretty cautious.
So I can, I can make a comment to that because I remember those exact parts of the meeting and my recollections were completely different. First of all, Fred Goldstein was, was expressing his personal opinion. He was not offering a scientific opinion with respect to the effect of radiation. He was speaking extemporaneously. With respect to Fran, same thing. People who are expressing their opinions in this meeting and they should not be construed or be part of the public record in this meeting as being scientific fact, when in fact, it's a, it's a personal opinion. So I completely disagree with your assertions.
I'm sorry that you do this, but I, I, we can agree to disagree because those statements were said. And I don't understand why they would make a comment if they hadn't read about that or learned about that in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any? I see that there are some people here who are appear to be abutters to the cell tower. And if you didn't hear me before, this would be a time for you to speak if you'd like to. But if not, we'll go on to any other public questions or comments that are out there. Okay. If I'm not seeing you, I apologize. You can unmute and yell loudly. Okay. Are we good? All right.
We have, we have Jonathan Marin has his hand signal on there.
Yes, and I was moving through like Conway residents first. But if we've heard from all the Conway residents that we're going to hear from in this section, this doesn't mean you can't speak later. It's just an order that we're trying to stick with. So I can recognize Jonathan Marin.
Thank you, Beth. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, since I believe it was Liz. And yeah, thank Joe for being at the webinar last night with Kent Chamberlain. And that link to that webinar for anyone who wants to watch it was submitted to the ZBA and the planning board, which I think really clarifies, you know, how, you know, this 500 meter mark. I want to clarify also, Mr. Parisi's comments mischaracterizing the commission as a study, who is a commission of independent experts, who then brought in nine experts. Eight of those nine experts they brought in concurd that radio frequency radiation has serious health effects. The one who didn't concur was the only one that was paid and that person represented the telecom industry. So it's a really incredible presentation. I encourage you to watch it. It clarifies a lot of the things about also that the head of the ZBA, I'm not seeing your name right now, brought up about how we came up with these, how these standards got evolved. But my point is, I'm not going to repeat anything I've sent in. But I just want to clarify Joe's question about shielding. You know, essentially what the commission found was that people within 500 meters are going to be at a higher cancer risk and for various other problems. So you could go ahead and approve it, you know, not deny it on the basis of health, which we know is a no-no. Of course, you could deny it for other reasons that a number of which have been submitted to the board. But you could approve it and then simply require as a condition that those within 500 meters who would like to have shielding for their homes paid for by the applicant could do that. That way, at least the town of Conway would be covered. You'd be covered individually in terms of really minimizing any potential injury for those people that clearly, you know, will be injured if you, if you actually do follow the science. So.
And I see a question, where is this science? You're, you're talking about all these experts, but you're not in your spoken remarks right now providing any citations. Provide some citations.
Well, you want me to actually read the, the side?
No, I want you to summarize where these, where these studies were published, were they peer reviewed?
They were peer reviewed. And in the New Hampshire report, they're all hyperlinked in the New Hampshire report, which has been.
No, 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 no. You're making the assertion, support your assertion by not saying to people, go out and find it for yourself.
No, I'm not asking you to find it for yourself. It's in the PDF that was sent. It's all hyperlink there.
Right, but I'm not, you know.
Like me to open the PDF.
Let me finish my statement. It is not sufficient to expect the people making a decision to merely follow your hyperlinks so that they can process for themselves whether or not your assertions are correct. I mean, that's just not how an argument is well crafted.
Okay, Phyllis, I, I just, I don't think that's what he's doing. I think he's citing to the New Hampshire report, which in turn, as if I understand correctly, did seem to cite to other reports. And I think the point that he's making, whether or not we agree with him, is something that can fairly be made without coming with a stack of citations.
Yeah, I disagree with that.
I'm going to interject here.
As an opinion.
I'm going to interject something here, which is that this New Hampshire report, it's long. And there's also a portion of it that is the minority report. And the minority report also cites a number of studies, scientific studies. It's interesting to me that there's a lot of information there. It's contradictory to each other.
Right.
And I just want to state that for the, for the record here. So I understand that people are concerned about, about health effects. I, I, there's, there's a lot of things to be concerned about for our individual health, for our family health. We care a great deal as people who serve the town about a lot of, about a lot of issues that affect people's health. You have to, you can trust me on that or you can not trust me on that. But it, speaking, speaking for myself, I, I, I care about my health. I care about my family's health. I have lived through a number of scary diagnoses and treatments in my immediate family. And it's difficult and, and it's, it's a hard thing to navigate. But I have to keep pulling us back to the fact that we, we are bound by our bylaw. And our bylaw has very specific things that we can consider when navigating a special permit. The Conway Board of, where does the Conway Board of Health stand on this issue? I, I can't imagine that they are taking a stand on this issue. I, I would refer people to the Pittsfield Board of Health, which was, is Verizon is now. which was, is Verizon is now suing the Pittsfield Board of Health for taking a stand on this issue as of this week. And I believe in federal court. And I'm not saying this because I, I don't want the town to get sued, although I truly don't want our town to get sued. But it's our, it's our obligation to follow our, our particular bylaws. And in terms of health, we, we cannot address health as part of our decision-making process.
I think those are great, great, I think those are great points, Beth. And I, that's why my suggestion, and I think the suggestion of several other people who have written in is that, you know, since it looks like you, the overall consensus from the first meeting was that, you know, you are going to approve the tower, but then you are able to write in conditions. And so you're able to, you're not going to be denying it on the basis of health. But, you know, I just, just as human beings who understand that, you know, you're capable of reading and looking at peer-reviewed research and sort of the history of how we got here, which I think the one hour presentation that you have the recording of does an excellent job of summarizing in a relatively short period of time. You know, that you can simply write in a condition that would make it quite a bit safer for those who will be most seriously impacted without running afoul of, you know, denying on the basis of health.
And you're suggesting she, this shielding thing is what you're suggesting as a condition? Again, this is something that feels like so far beyond our ability as a board to implement.
Yeah, which I, I totally sympathize with that. And that's why in my letter, I, I've mentioned that Kent Chamberlain is willing to donate his time pro bono to just, he could even just talk you through what that would even look like in a relatively short period of time. And just to give you what that would mean.
Okay, yeah. So I just want to reiterate for the rest of the group here that several of the comments that we received via email referred to shielding homes within 500 meters of the cell tower proposed.
Just the homes that wanted it, of course.
Just the homes that wanted it.
Has any home, I guess one question would be, has any, anyone given all the notice that they would like shielding, whatever that means?
And who is, who's, is this Andy?
It's Andy, yeah. I'm just curious if we actually heard from anybody in light of the discussion at the last meeting. Hey, I'd like shielding, you know, please condition approval on this.
I don't, again, so I.
Why are we, why are we having this discussion if it's outside the scope of this meeting? I don't even understand that.
Okay.
No, I'm just curious.
It's not within the authority of the, of the zoning board of appeals. And it's not within the authority of planning board to consider health. So why are we considering health? We don't have, we don't have the authority to do that.
Understood. I just have.
Characterization, you, you certainly can, you just can't justify a denial based on health. You certainly, it's, they haven't actually said you're not allowed to talk about it. You can't discuss it.
No, that's what's being asked is that we actually consider it as part of our decision. That's what I'm hearing.
Right, well, I think that what I, what I'm pointing out is I don't think anyone, any of the abutters have even asked for this.
Well, I think they don't, they know about it.
Because it's being suggested, that's why they are finding out about it. And it's being, you are suggesting that they, that they demand it, are you not?
I'm not suggesting they demand anything, I, it's just.
Well, you are recommending it.
Well, I'm recommending you consider it based on, on.
And I'm saying, and I'm saying that it's outside of the scope of the authority in the zoning board of appeals to consider health.
And in addition, I mean, the point I'm making is that, you know, this has been, you know, the meetings have been publicized.
Right.
And we had a meeting, a full discussion last week. So even if we could, even if one assumed for the moment that this was some, a condition we could impose, I would be reluctant if to, to do so since, you know, no one within that distance has shown up and said that they would like this to be imposed. No one who falls within that, you know, even if we could do it, no one's asked, no one who's affected has asked us to do it.
Can I have a point of clarification, Beth?
Yes.
So a lot of, a lot of this dialogue is going on, and I appreciate the dialogue. I, I, I believe in people sharing their opinions. But it seems to me that the only thing that is before the ZBA is whether or not the height is okay.
That is correct.
And if there were any shielding or other sorts of considerations to be taken into consideration, that would be a planning board issue. Am I, am I?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that? Okay, good. So, so I would, I would, I would hope that the dialogue about shielding, and I'm not sure whether that's a condition that we can impose. And we can impose a variety of different conditions. But I don't know if that's one of them. I certainly would be willing to look into it. And I certainly would be interested in knowing how many houses are within 500 meters of the tower. But, but I, I don't know that this particular dialogue is helpful to our decision right now.
Okay, yes, I agree with you. And I think we're going to bring this one to a close right now. And I'm going to.
Peter had his hand up also.
Peter, Peter, and then Barbara Melville will be next after Peter.
It was mostly to Susan's point about the discussion. Not appropriate for ZBA, it was about the health and all. We're on height and it's more for the planning board to discuss.
Okay. So that's. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Peter. And I'm going to call on Barbara Melville.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I would rather know that I can call for help anytime that I need to in this area, whether it's winter, going off the road in the winter, going for a hike on my own land and, you know, falling and being injured. I would rather know that I can call for help than to worry about radiation that thousands and thousands and thousands of millions probably of cell towers around the world are in existence. And the number of issues, health issues that have scientifically been proven so far seem to be, maybe there are some, I'm not denying that there are some, but the numbers seem to be so minuscule that, again, I would rather be able to call for help than worry myself sick over whether I'm going to get cancer from any of these millions of cell towers around the world.
Thank you, Barbara. So it is now almost nine o'clock. So we've been continuing this hearing for about an hour. We've heard from a number of people. We've received probably comment from a number of people. And I'm, I'm thinking that we've taken in quite a lot of information. And I'm wondering what our next step would be before we move to, before we get ready to move to deliberation. So Susan.
Beth, I, I'm wondering if it's possible for Vertex to tell us how many residences are within 500 feet of the tower? Just as a matter of curiosity and information for our, our decision.
500 meters.
I'm sorry, 500 meters. Thank you, thank you, 500 meters.
1,640 feet.
Right. Okay.
This is not science. This is Fran looking at it while you guys were chatting. I counted three houses within 500 meters, one of which the abutters spoke just now, and one of which the other abutters spoke last week in favor of the tower. The, we had several comments similar to the landowner from abutters that expressed the support for the tower based on the safety value of it as opposed to the risks involved with it. And, and I think that speaks for itself. But we're talking three or four.
Thank you, thank you, Fran. Thank you. I was, I was wondering, thank you.
Okay, thanks for the information.
More than that, just by the way, there's many more than three or four, including the Ricardis.
I, I, please don't, please raise your hand before you speak so I can call on you. Thanks. So I'm going to turn to people who know, who understand more than me about joint public hearings and ask what our next steps might be in terms of, are we ready to take all the comments and the information and the answers and the reporting and the presentations that we've received? And are we ready to move on to the next phase of this process? Which would be starting the deliberation phase? And I'm going to direct this question to Joe because you're, unfortunately, you're still here working on these things, Joe. And ask you what, what would be our, like, next part of this if we were going to move to deliberation?
Well, my thought would be that the first step would be to close the public comment hearing. That I believe that does not prevent us from going back to any one of these people for clarification or additional information. But the, the time for public comment gets closed when we close the public hearing. For me personally, I guess I need to know if all five of you are going to stay through the deliberations, in which case I'm useless, so to speak. My purpose here was to fill in if someone couldn't participate in the hearings and in the deliberation. So at some point, I may be stepping out of this. But I think you should close the public hearing, public comment hearing, and schedule deliberation. It's getting late, so I would assume you.
Yeah.
Don't want to deliberate tonight.
No, I personally, and I'm, I'm going to check in with Mark on this. I don't think that we can deliberate tonight. There's a lot to sort through. And I, I wasn't suggesting that we moved to the deliberation phase tonight as a, as a planning board. And I didn't know if Mark was interested in doing that. But I would suggest that we think about closing the public hearings, comment period of this, and move to the deliberation phase. And that would probably be after town meeting because town meeting is June 4th. And we have to do a lot there. So we would, we would be moving it probably most reasonably to our, to the planning board, regularly scheduled planning board meeting date of June. What would that be? Can't believe it.
Steve?
I can't believe it's already June 16th. No, not June 9th.
June 9th? That'd be the 16th, right?
It'll be the 16th.
That's, that's the third Thursday?
Third Thursday. It would be the third Thursday. So what do other, so Mark?
I guess, I guess we've established.
There, yeah.
We've established that, whoops. Just, sorry. We've established that if the zoning board were to approve this, the grant the variance, it still is tied to the planning board's contingent approval, conditional approval of the special permit. So I think we're, we're entertaining whether, you know, we'd be able to make a decision tonight. And clearly, that's not going to be able to be possible for the planning board. So it's, it's not relevant. What the zoning board wants to do is we're still tied to your, your needs and your decision-making process. Therefore, I would say, if you're going to be continuing the meeting once again, or the hearing once again, I think that we need to follow suit.
We're not continuing to hear, or we're, we would consider closing the hearing and then moving to the deliberation phase.
Pardon me. Yes, but the deliberation phase, which also entails the making a decision.
Yeah.
Hopefully the next time, but ultimately, at some point, then we're, we're tied to you. So I'm, I'm going to say that, I can't say I'm going to enthusiastically speak for everybody, but I think we need to, to defer to the decision the planning board makes about whether to, to go on to another date for the, for the next stage of the decision-making process.
Any, any lawyerly types have thoughts on that?
Could I comment on that?
Sure, you're a lawyerly type.
I agree with Mr. Silverman that it would be convenient to have the planning board and zoning board vote concurrently. But I don't think it's necessary. And the, both the planning board and the zoning board crafted well reasoned and I think advised by counsel decisions the last time. So we have templates for the decision. I agree, it might be an appropriate condition to add to the zoning board decision that it is contingent on planning board approval of the special permit. But that's really all we're adding. So I think the planning, the zoning board could meet, could convene at any time conveniently with the planning board or at its own schedule, including tonight.
Sure. I guess my response to that is what, what happened two years ago. And even though we try to discount precedent somebody like this, but it still was a lesson to be learned that the, the special permit was actually granted by the planning board months after the variance was granted by the zoning board of appeals. And that, that made a real mess in terms of extensions that you needed to have.
Hopefully, we don't need extensions this time.
Hopefully.
You're right. And, and but it, it would just require me to come back on a staggered schedule like we did this time. I, that would not be, I'm, it would, to me, it wouldn't be a reason to postpone making a decision tonight. And I'm also thinking for the convenience of the zoning board, who seems more ready to make a decision than the planning board. And like I said, has a form of, of, of decision already drafted with one new condition that's relatively easy to add.
We're, we're also, just as a point of, for everybody, clarification is that the Conservation Commission is having a meeting later this month that, and they'll be addressing some pieces of this application. And personally, I, I'm interested in finding out what, what their recommendations would be and what their orders of condition would be.
So I guess I'd like to ask other members of the zoning board with this in mind, what, what you want to do. Peter?
I don't see any advantage to voting tonight. I don't see a disadvantage to waiting. I guess that's, that's my, I don't see a disadvantage to waiting and, and putting it all together in one package.
Right, I agree with Peter because the decision that needs to be made by the zoning board is so limited with respect to what, what the subject of the variance is. There's no benefit, there's no public benefit for the zoning board to make its decision now.
So Andy, what do you think?
I agree.
So Beth, could, where'd you go? There you are. You keep popping all over the place.
Not my fault. Really sitting in.
Mark, Mark? I, I wonder if you could vote, but make the effective date the date that the planning board issues its order of conditions. So that the timing starts on the same day? If, if that's really, if the issue is timing, I, I don't know whether you could vote to grant the variance, but it becomes effective not the day you voted it, but the day we issued the special permit. So that the ti, the timing is synchronized? If, if that's the issue, I don't, I don't quite understand why that is an issue. It's probably only a month or two different. And I don't think, and I think Fran's prepared to deal with it. But we, possibly you could arrange a start date or the effective date to be the same as ours.
Can you help us, Susan?
I'm going to recognize Susan.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify that the planning board has not made a decision to grant this variance. This is, I want to be sure that this is not, nobody in this meeting should assume that the planning board is necessarily going to grant this variance. And I, I appreciate Fran, your enthusiasm for the project, but I want to make it clear to everybody in this meeting that this is not a decision we have made. We are going to deliberate and take everything into consideration. That being said, Beth, I'm going to move that the hearing, that the public hearing be closed.
Okay. I do want to recognize that Alice Vigliani asked that all members of the planning board and zoning board get to read the email comments. Yes, I want to assure everyone who sends in public comments that we do pay attention to it, we do read it, and it becomes part of our, of the public record. So yes.
Beth, can I ask a question about scheduling? If we were to piggyback and make it a joint deliberation, whether it's deliberating together or just one after the other? and make it a joint deliberation, whether it's deliberating together or just one after the other, is that something that can be done to, to tie together the decision-making process were both boards to, to grant approval?
I'm thinking that would make it a pretty long meeting. I'm not sure if it's practical. But we still have to post, you, you know, you have to post it as, as a zoning board meeting.
Yes.
And we have to post publicly posted as a planning board meeting. I think this is something that we, I don't know, I don't know how to answer that. I, I think it would make it we're tied together in some ways, but we're also not. Do you know what I mean? I, you know, the one. Susan, help.
No, so what I would recommend, and I think this has already been recommended, Mark, but what I would recommend is that zoning board of appeals do its deliberation, decide on the variance, make your vote. And if that vote is a positive vote, make it contingent on the, on the planning board's approval of their, of their, of the permit with whatever conditions the planning board might impose, and that way yours will be in effect as soon as ours is in effect. That seems to me to, to be the best way to, to manage that, but.
Which was Joe's suggestion.
Yes, I'm, I'm agreeing with Joe then.
To accommodate everyone's concerns here, I actually think if the zoning board might convene an hour or two hours before the planning board reconvenes, then you have the same date along the lines of what Ms. Fenton just said.
Okay, so that would be helpful to Fran and Tom. So zoning board, anybody have any comment about having our deliberation meeting right before the, or the same evening as the, the planning board meeting on the sixteenth of June? Peter.
I think that's a good idea. I don't really feel like deliberating tonight, so it's getting late and I had a long day.
Could I ask one personal favor? I have a conflict on the sixteenth. Was June ninth an option? As an alternative?
No, it's not.
Out of the country on business on June ninth.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't set our July schedule yet. So.
I'm not interested in going into July. You might recall that we were patient in skipping over the month of May. I don't know that we need to go into July.
Can Tom be your proxy that night?
We will have coverage on June sixteenth, if that's.
Okay, so I'm gonna refer back to Susan's motion to, she made a motion to
Close the here, close the public hearing.
Sorry, just if Beth wants to incorporate the Conservation Committee information that is upcoming, that means you wouldn't be able to do that if you close the hearing right now.
No, Beth said that we are still able to take comments from anybody and further input from other people that's still able to be submitted to us and will be considered in our deliberations. It's just not the public hearing anymore.
Okay, thanks. Your meetings at eight o'clock, right?
Our meetings are at seven o'clock.
Okay.
Our, our regularly scheduled meetings are at seven o'clock. We would probably do regular planning board business and then turn to the deliberation piece of this later in the evening, and I don't what time that would be.
So roughly eight o'clock, something similar to what we did this evening.
Probably earlier, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go through the movement process after you do that.
Yeah, okay, so back to Susan's motion.
This is George, one final question.
Thank you.
I, I'm not sure we got a solid answer from Mr. Parisi about the number of homes other than that number of meters. Perhaps we could have that information at some point.
Okay. Hundred meters, okay.
It's nice to do a back-of-the-envelope calculation tonight, but I think it'd be better to have the actual precise information before we deliberate.
Okay, that's what we're requesting of you, Vertex Tower assets reps.
The answer to that is yes. My only response is I believe the planning board made a very thoughtful and well-crafted decision the last time with advice of counsel. And I can't say that any deviation from that will be acceptable to the applicant.
I get it.
So and I'm not a biologist, I'm a lawyer, and I have to defer to your counsel in that regard.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll look back at the advice of counsel. So we're still back at this motion, I think, but thank you, George.
I don't think it ever was seconded, Beth.
I'll second it, Susan.
I'd like to suggest an amendment. I don't, I don't think that we should leave the, it open for more public comment by mail. I think once you close the hearing, it's done. I don't, I don't think, I don't think we should accept any more public comments personally. This just goes on forever. I mean, we, we're closing the, the public hearing, the oral, if you will, the oral part. And I think we need to close the written part as well.
Okay.
If we have questions, we can come back to people. We have the right to ask them questions.
We have the right to ask for clarification of anyone, and we have the right to ask, yeah, we have the right to do that. That's a very good point. Does this change Susan's motion?
Doesn't simply move to close the hearing, but I might want to clarify that.
Which. So while our meetings are always going to be public, publicly posted, oh, Bruton's hands up. Okay, is your hand up, Bruton? Veroneek is pointing this out to me.
Yes, thank you, Veroneek.
And commission.
Yeah, you guys are in the middle of a motion. I don't want to interrupt that, but I just wanted to make sure that we coordinate. It seems it's nice when you guys make your decisions first so that we can kind of piggyback off of y'all. But in, but we do have that, like you mentioned, because you mentioned a meeting on next week. And it doesn't seem like you guys are gonna be having anything until June. Does that sound about right?
Right. We are not.
Okay. If I could just back up for two seconds, did you guys cover any of the new? Are you guys gonna have any input on the construction of the driveway? I know this is out of left, left field. But the amendment that Fran submitted on the tenth with.
The supplement three?
Yeah, yeah, that's really, that's, that's a kind of the new thing that's affecting the CONCOM, and I don't know if you guys have any comment on that or.
I think this would be something we would be certainly taking into account for during our deliberations. And if we had questions on it or specific orders of condition, we would be directing them to Vertex.
Or the, or the CONCOM.
And the CONCOM, right, like, and the Conservation Commission, so.
Okay. All right, that just kind of affects our meeting next week, and whether or not we continue it or postpone it until you guys are kind of settled.
This is like, this is kind of like a Mobius strip, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, but I think you guys have the bigger authority here, and we usually, you know, well, different authorities, but.
Well, the Wellands, Wetlands Regulation Act has really big authority here.
No, for sure, but you know, I think it's better when you guys go first. That happened last time, and it was, it was nice. I felt like we got ahead of ourselves because we started our hearing before you guys did, and
Okay.
Does complicate things is all.
All right.
Sorry to sidetrack everybody.
No, thanks for the, thanks for the comments. Help me. Okay. Okay, I've really officially lost track now.
I seconded the motion to adjourn the
Okay.
Hearing and the public hearing, understanding that that means that we won't accept any more written or oral public comment.
Yes. And we will be having this, it will continue in as a public meeting on the sixteenth of June. So that was seconded. All in favor in the planning board, that would be Beth.
Madam Chair, if I could interrupt, you need to say a time certain.
Oh, at time certain, oh. As part of the motion, we have to say that.
As in seven thirty, so what we're talking about.
The words, right?
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. So Fran, the purpose for the time certain is for the beginning of our deliberations? Is that what you're saying?
Just for the continuation of the public meeting.
There is no, there is, the public hearing is being closed.
No, I understand.
We are going to meet again at the planning board meeting for our deliberations. Those are public meetings that need to be posted. It's not a public hearing.
No, I understand that, but if the, if you're, the planning board meets at a regularly scheduled time, like six o'clock or whatever the regular time is, you should announce that. I, you're, you're hundred percent right, it's not, the meeting is not subject to public comment, but it's, people can show up and listen, so they need to know.
It's a public meeting, yes, of course.
So you just need to say.
Well, we're closing the public hearing now.
Correct. What time, what time, what time is the public hearing, I mean, sorry, the public meeting on June sixteen?
Our meetings begin at seven.
Perfect.
Does this change the motion at all?
No.
Okay.
We were about to do the roll call. I think Beth.
So that would be me, I, Beth Gershman.
I, George, for sir.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, Jennifer Mullins.
Hi, Susan Fenton.
Is Bill here?
I see him.
He's probably muted.
Raise your hand, Bill. Okay, so the motion passes and we're going to adjourn this.
Actually, we, the zoning board has to do the same thing.
Oh, right.
So anybody make a duly, a motion to have a duly posted meeting for the zoning board of appeals on June sixteenth at seven o'clock.
I have.
Second.
So we have a, a motion and a second?
Yes.
You're, you're muted, Phyllis.
I can't do it in person. I have another business trip, so it'll have to be a virtual for me.
Okay. Off the fear of how to do that. So all in favor, say, I?
I.
I.
And so, and for me as well. Okay, so we will have our deliberation meeting duly posted on the June sixteenth at seven o'clock.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you all very much for attending and participating, and I appreciate everyone's different points of view, I do, and I think that's it for tonight, unless someone has something so important to say, but we're, we're done. Okay. See you all later. Plant your gardens.
And sleep well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.